Good evening, 6:00 PM, July 12th, 2017. I'd like to open the zoning Board of Appeals meeting for this evening. First, I'd like to announce that this meeting is being televised live on local Mashpee TV. So if we can all rise and say the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. At the end of the meeting tonight, the board will reorganize for the upcoming calendar year. Sitting in tonight's first two continued hearings will be the five that sat on it two weeks ago, so Dom is out and Ron is out on the first two continued hearings. So Jim, would you read the first continued hearing?
Continuing the hearing on 27 Uncantina Road. Owners Michael D. and Angela Madnick request a written finding under 174-17 (extensions or alterations).
Get your mic closer.
And 174-33 (setback from water and wetlands of the zoning bylaws to allow for installation of a 10-foot-by-10-foot hot tub on property located in an R3 zoning district in Pappanessett Overlay District, MAP 123, Parcel 65 Mashpee, Massachusetts.
Hi. Good evening. For the record, my name is Jack Lenders-Collie. I'm a civil engineer in private practice. My office is located at 634 North Almath Highway in North Alma, and I've been retained by the Madnicks to present the plan that's before you. I think I should take two steps back and explain what we did in the last two-week period. I presented this plan before the board two weeks ago, explained to you the merits of why I believe it meets the performance standards, should be approved. At that meeting, a letter was submitted by one of the neighbors that questioned how the hot tub was going to be maintained. Fair question. My comment at the time was, I've sat in plenty of hot tubs but never maintained them because I never owned one. So I'll find out. In the last week, we did just that. With the assent of the owner, we came up with a design where there will not be a direct discharge either into the septic system, the wetlands, the bordering wetlands are both across the ground. What we proposed to do is use a dry well that would be sufficiently sized to discharge either a portion of the hot tub or, as defined in the action plan, discharge at a rate that it wouldn't overburden the dry well and cause it to overflow. Although, I don't think that would be the case because the soils are so coarse and granular. And so, we have modified the plan to show a dry well with a landscape grade. We've prepared a brief action plan. It's consistent with the recommendations of the board of health, and as such, we believe it can be approved by this board. That is the only change. If you have questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay. Question I have is, has Conservation and Border Health seen where you're going to put the dry well? I know they don't have an issue with you putting a dry well in, but have they seen the location, the proposed location of it?
Okay. The Board of Health was pretty specific that we couldn't discharge it into those three things I told you, the septic system, which is a regulation by Title V, the wetlands, which the Board of, the Conservation Commission would not permit, and it's interesting, they never discussed this particular issue. But they have not seen the dry well because of, you know, that's what transpired in the last two weeks. Again, to back up, we did go before the Conservation Commission had received approval for placement of the hot tub, just not the dry well. Certainly, I have no problem going back and asking for an amendment to that filing. I can't believe for the life of me they would disapprove it, considering, I think we've improved how they're going to maintain the hot tub at this point.
Okay.
It's a fair question, so I will go back and ask Drew for, see if I can get administrative approval on that.
Well, we've got an action plan. I'll just read this in to the record. So it's the action plan for the hot tub at 27 Uncantina. Prior to the placement and utilization of the hot tub, as shown on the accompanying plan, the following tasks have been done. Number one, a dry well shall be installed in the location as depicted on the submitted and, I guess it says, approved plan. Whereas necessary to clean or service the hot tub, it would be required that the hot tub be neutralized of bleach, chlorine, or other sanitizers prior to discharging of water into a dry well. Neutralization can be accomplished by either, one, permitting the hot tub water to rest as to neutralize by natural means, or, two, to be chemically neutralized as recommended by the manufacturer of the sanitizing agents. Number two, discharge of dry well should be a rate not to exceed the capacity of the dry well. Three, any and all water from the dry well shall be untreated or treated, whether untreated or treated, shall not be discharged into the surface of the ground, septic system, pond, or wetland. Number four, all discharging of water from the hot tub shall be continually supervised by the owner or his representatives. And five, all chemical treatments of the water, to the water of the hot tub, shall be by the owners or an individual licensed to handle cleansing agents. End of action plan. And this is submitted by J.E. Landers-Collie, PE, PO Box 364, West Almath, Mass., and dated July 11th, and it's to Mary Ann at the Zoning Board of Appeals. So I'll enter that into the record. And I think that both boards, the, actually Conservation Commission and Border Health have seen this, and they have no issue whatsoever with that. Let's see. I think we've got some information regarding, okay, and this is from Glenn Harrington, regarding 27 Uncantina action plan. Says, "The action plan looks fine. Like to see the location of the dry well when the plan is available." And that's from Glenn Harrington, and he's the Board of Health. See if I got anything from Conservation on this. I think we do.
Yeah, I have it here, John.
Go ahead.
This is from the Conservation Commission dated July 12th, again, sent to Mary Ann Romero. It's, "Hi, Mary Ann. I have reviewed the action plan, and it sounds good to me. Thank you. In regards to Sixth Canter Lane, I spoke with the contractor, and he has provided..."
Yeah, we don't need to.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
We'll get that next time.
I apologize. I apologize.
There is one here, though.
Yeah, there is. I saw one.
Okay. It's from Conservation, let's see, Thursday, June 29th, so this is an old one. But I think we actually already read this in. Do we have something new? Yeah. Let me read this one anyway, because it's, got some stuff here. And it's from Andrew McManus and Conservation, stated Thursday, July 29th, and it's to Mary Ann Romero, Zoning Board of Appeals. "Hi, Mary Ann. When the commission issues permits for pools, we do require the following conditions, which would also apply to hot tubs." And we've reviewed this before, but I'll just read it in again. "Hot tubs shall not be chloridated within two weeks before emptying. The hot tub shall be emptied, not be emptied directly into any wetlands. This project was approved through a request for determination permit, so it was not conditioned. However, the ZBA make these conditions for approval, that would be good, so that would be part of the approval." So do we have something more recent?
Well, I think that's what he read. Bill Redd, was this that one line?
Just the first line.
It's the first line, which is...
He reviewed the action plan in these five.
Okay. I don't have any issues with this at all. I'm glad it's on the plan. I'd just like to make sure that if we approve this, then...
Board of Health.
So let's hold on a second. This is from the Board of Health, Wednesday, July 12th, 9:00 AM. "As long as the location of the dry well is in the backyard in close proximity of the hot tub, it'll be fine. The septic is in the front yard. Drew may wish to see it as the entire project is in con-con jurisdiction." So if we condition it to final approval of this plan by both Conservation and Border Health, I think we can move on this.
Because it sounds good.
Do you agree with that?
I agree.
Okay. Bill, would you like to make a motion on this? And we're conditioning it on final approval of both of those.
I make a motion that we approve 27 Uncantina Roads, owners Michael D. and Angela Madnick's requests for a written finding under Section 174-17 (extension or alterations) and Section 174-33 (setback from water and wetlands) of the zoning bylaws to allow for installation of a 10-foot-by-10-foot hot tub on property located in an R3 zoning district in the Pappanessett Overlay District, MAP 123, Parcel 65 Mashpee, Mass. This motion is conditioned on the following. The board has determined that the applicant has, meets all of the conditions of a written finding under Mass. General Law, Section 48, Section 6. It's also conditioned on a site plan prepared for Michael Madnick of 27 Uncantina Road, Mashpee, Mass., J.F. Landers, PF...
J.E.
J.E. Landers, PE, Civil and Environmental Engineering, PO Box 364, West Almath, Mass., assessors number 123-65, date 5/10/17, scale is 1 inch equal 20 feet.
Hang on. You gotta revise that the date is 03/23/17.
Okay. I'm sorry.
Hang on. I'm sorry. No, revised is now 7/12/17.
7/12/17?
Yes.
Scale 1 inch equals 20 feet, drawn by...
Correction. On this one, scale is 1 inch equals 10 feet.
1 inch equals 10 feet, drawn by JDR, job number 2805...
Add this 2805 on this one.
...BOA.
No, I don't have that. This 2805.
Okay. Sheet 1 of 1.
There we go.
It's also conditioned on all town departments' comments read into the record and conditioned on final approval of the site plan by Board of Health and Conservation.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor? Aye. Well done.
Thank you. Could I get another copy of the plan?
Scott, sign on the correct line, if you would.
Let me see that.
We've had this issue.
Yeah, but I was the one who did it.
I know, that's why I said that.
Right? I knew why you said it.
Trying to throw you under the covers.
It's all right. I'm used to it.
I didn't see it to anybody else.
Okay. Jim, would you read the next continued hearing?
Opening up the continued hearing on 33 Center Street. Owner Catherine M. McBrien requests a modification to the moderate housing restriction set forth in a comprehensive permit issued in 2004 under Mass. General Law's Chapter 40B, Section 21, on property located in an R5 zoning district, MAP 36, Parcel 47D, Mashpee, Massachusetts.
Okay. Before we get started on this particular hearing, I'd like to actually make a statement.
If I could just say, I'm gonna step down. Mr. Chairman, I may have a conflict.
Okay. Well, it's gonna be the same five that were on it two weeks ago. But at the last meeting two weeks ago, we heard testimony on this for approximately 90 minutes, on both sides of this argument. So I really don't want to rehash the same material again. I think everybody has probably had enough time to make up their minds as which way they are leaning on voting. So I'd like to have one, really one spokesman from each side, maybe a closing statement, couple, three minutes, yourself, and maybe somebody from Mashpee Affordable Housing, and then we'll have, the five board members can make a statement, and then we will just vote. So if that's agreeable, go right ahead, if you would.
I agree. No reason to rehash. For the record, Peter Freeman, Freeman Law Group, representing the applicant, my clients are here. I would ask only that I will make comments right now, and then Mrs. McBrien would like to briefly speak, but understood not rehashing. So...
Could you speak up? Or take the mic?
Just take the mic by hand.
Yeah, it's kind of an issue with the mic.
First point, thanks, is that you were going to check with town attorney. Most recently, we checked with staff, and I don't know if he had gotten back to you, but I don't know if there's any feedback on that score. The second point, and I will be brief, is I had stressed and acknowledged it is absolutely an unusual situation. It is. But it really is a hardship for my client. That's what they're here for. Nobody's trying to weasel out of anything. One of the concerns, which I for will understand, is you're concerned about precedent. There were four affordables, one was, I'm sorry, four moderate units on this development, the only ones in town. One has been lost due to foreclosure. So that's three. The petitioner is here, that is one of the three, and a butter, I shouldn't say a butter, another property owner, I believe is here again tonight, who spoke, she owns another one of the moderate units. So there's really only one more in question. Concern about precedent, given the statement, which Mr. Abbott can speak again, but the statement from the Affordable Housing Committee is, I believe, and I don't mean to misstate, but I do recall that he said actually, not advocating on behalf of the town, that you grant the... Actually, he agreed with the economics, that it just didn't work out. That's what I want to emphasize. The moderate deed idea may be seen good at the time, but it just doesn't... In terms of precedent, you know what you do, which would be eminently fair, is simply say, okay, if other property owners of the moderate units, which is really just two more in this development, were to ask for the same relief, you would grant it, subject to the same thing. Because even though we're asking that the unit be released from the restriction, we're not asking that it just become totally a market unit right now. It would in the future, yes. But they're asking only that they can sell it for the maximum price, given all that they put into it, as Mrs. McBrian explained. They're asking that they be allowed to sell it for the maximum resale price under the deed rider. So they are abiding by the bargain that they struck. The problem is, economics haven't kept up, and there's nobody out there who's gonna buy a unit for ballpark the price they could buy a market unit, and yet be subject to this restriction, and probably have no increase in equity in the future. So I suggest to you that that would be perfectly fair, and would do what zoning boards are often called upon to do, which is to look at the uniqueness of a situation, the facts that are before you, but recognizing and respecting your concern for precedent, I think it would be eminently fair and reasonable and legitimate for you to make such a finding with your decision here, again, that it's not just, gee, suddenly it's marketing, good luck, sell it for whatever you can, sell it by what the contract document said, the maximum resale price, which is what they're asking. So I'll stop there and turn it over to Catherine, if you'd like to make a brief statement.
Thank you very much. Katie McBrien, 37 Center Street. I had reviewed the last meeting that we had. We recorded it at home, and I watched it a couple times, thrilling as it was, but I took a few notes, and obviously, I'm not gonna go over them all, but in addition to what our attorney has stated, it was explained that moderate units are not counted in that subsidized housing part of the program, and that it completely was an agreement between Mr. McShane and the board at the time in 2005, or '04, 2004. As our attorney just stated, there are no other moderate units in the town at all. The Housing Assistance Corporation does not even have an answer to the situation that I've brought to this committee, and Mrs. Stanley has come to view and listen to in the same circumstance. And I just wanted to reiterate from the last meeting that a 40B low-income affordable homeowner cannot request the same thing that I'm requesting, because it's completely different circumstances. The situation is a different animal, as we had stated before. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Abbott?
New chairman of the Affordable Housing Committee.
Very good.
Come right up, if you would. And our reorganization meeting last night.
And for the record, Jim.
My name is Alan Isbitz, 261 Fells Pound Road, and I am the new chairman, as of last night, of the Affordable Housing Committee. We've discussed this quite a bit. We understand there are other circumstances and difficulties involved here, but the unit was intended for moderate income buyers for, from 80% to 120% of median income, and the restrictions are pretty firm. Not only is, does the deed rider, is it limited to a maximum resale price, which is the form of which is in the agreement, but it also is subject to a purchase certificate that the monitoring agent, in this case Housing Assistance Corporation, has to issue, and they issue it with the explicit understanding that the restrictions are in place. So I don't understand, I mean, the maximum resale price is comfortable price, I don't understand why the restrictions have to be lifted in order to sell at a comfortable price. I do understand that complicates the sale, that having a restriction in place does not make the sale more attractive, but the restrictions are in there for a reason. They're in there to ensure that, over the long term, this will be a unit that will be available for a moderate income buyer. And the circumstances that exist now in the marketplace may not exist in the future, and the restrictions may have more meaning in the future. And the fact that they don't have meaning now doesn't mean that it can't be sold for a comfortable price. I think it may take a little more effort to find a buyer willing to buy it with the restrictions in place. And I understand from Housing Assistance Corporation, I talked this afternoon with Gail Kelleher, and her understanding is that there may be, in fact, a buyer who is interested in the unit currently, who may in fact be an eligible buyer, and is waiting for the seller to approach HAC to go over the details of it. So I don't know if that's true or not, but that's what I hear from HAC. And we're certainly, as a committee, interested in keeping the restrictions in place, and legally, it seems like they have, it has to stay in place. So that's, I apologize if I'm going over old information, I was not able to make the last hearing, but that's where we are at this point, as a committee. That's it.
If I may, and I know you don't want to belabor it, but, you know, quite honestly, I think the final point is grossly unfair. I cannot imagine that Ms. Kelleher stated that, "I am on the board of the Housing Assistance Corporation. I told you that. I was there today. I work with Gil Kelleher all the time." If there were a buyer, don't you think, who's eligible, who's interested at this price, don't you think that she would have called me and her client? She has a list, she's the listing because she's the lottery agent. I cannot imagine that Gail Kelleher really has a likely buyer. I just really cannot imagine that. And I would ask you to not make a decision based on the fact that, gee, suddenly there's a buyer. I would be shocked if Gail Kelleher did not contact me and her client. She'd be irresponsible not to, and she's not an irresponsible person. So I think the statement that was just made, I respect it. I don't mean to be so harsh. I apologize, but I feel strongly what I just said, and having missed the entire last hearing and all of the, I think eloquently stated, personal hardship statements by my client with all the money they put in, it's not as easy as just saying, try to sell it for less than the maximum price. They put in a lot of money. I understand the concern about precedent, but sometimes zoning boards have to deal with difficult situations. And I, I'm in an unusual position, because as some of you know, usually, I'm here advocating for affordable housing developments and asking you to grant the zoning waivers, so that more affordable units, which are the truly affordable, at the 80% or less of moderate in, of annual median income, I'm seldom in the position of saying, please release this type of a restriction. I've never asked for one, and as my client correctly stated, you can't ask for a release from the ones that are required under 40B. This one has nothing to do with 40B. It was well-intentioned, perhaps, but it simply doesn't work. And the likelihood, again, with the current chairman's statement of the Affordable Housing Committee, it's gonna be a long time, the way the market on the Cape is and the Mashpee market, and it's not gonna be any time in the near future that suddenly there's a big delta between a market price and the moderate price. So these owners are in this situation, and I'll stop there, but I would beseech you to be considerate of both aspects, and I think you can satisfy your concern about the precedent. Thanks.
I have one question before we give it to each board member to make a statement. What is the current asking price?
It was 330...
Current asking price?
364...
364. 364 thousand.
Okay.
That was under you draw points.
Okay.
Is this one been read into the record? It's from Gail. I think you ought to read that into the record.
Okay. Well, I believe this was talked about. I don't know if it was read in. Was it read in, Mary Ann?
It wasn't.
Okay. Scott, would you like to read this in?
Sure.
This is a letter.
Do you want to see it?
You're welcome to have a copy of it. So I know this was talked about, I'm not sure it was read in.
It was never read in.
Okay. Why don't we just read it into the record, if you would?
Office of Zoning Board of Appeals, Town of Mashpee, 16 Great Nick Road, North Mashpee, Mass. Property owner Catherine T. Donahue McBrien, 37 Center Street, Mashpee. Deed recorded in Barnstable County Registry of Deeds, Land Court, CTF number C357-37. Housing Assistance Corporation, HAC, was contracted by the developer of Main Street Village, John McShane, to serve as the lottery agent and subsequently, monitoring agent of this project. HAC has been in contact with Catherine McBrien, the owner of 37 Center Street, on many occasions by both telephone and email, regarding their interest in selling their property. We informed her that HAC did not have any eligible purchases on the waiting list of mortgage-approved buyers that could purchase for the price that the sellers were asking, maximum resale price. Our waiting list consists of buyers in the 80% AMI category. In consideration of the fact that we are currently, that we, that there are currently no buyers on the waiting list, we have waived the 90-day... no buyers on the waiting list, we have waived the ninety-day period in which we would have to find an eligible buyer. See attached deed restriction, section four, to allow the sellers to sell the property to an eligible buyer. We felt it was not necessary to make them wait the ninety days since we knew we didn't have a ready, willing, and able buyer that could afford the maximum resale price. It was made clear to the owners that the maximum resale price is no way a guarantee, but rather a price ceiling. See attached deed restrictions, section 4K. We recommend to the owner that the asking price be lowered to reflect the value of purchasing the property with a resale restriction. We inform the owner that the buyer would want to have a substantial discount from market value in order to purchase the home that has a resale restriction. Buyers would expect an unrestricted home if they are not paying market price. In the past, we have been successful in selling moderate restricted homes when the resale price calculation number was high and close to market value because the sellers chose to take a small profit and priced the home well below market and well below the maximum resale price. This is more in keeping with the way the program was designed. Gail Kelleher, Director of Real Estate Housing Assistance Corporation.
Okay. Jim, do you have any thoughts, any statements you'd like to make before we vote?
The subject of president.
Grab your, grab your mic, pull it in close.
The subject of president comes up. I'm so reluctant to allow it to escape the inventory.
If it's not on the inventory.
Somebody wants to speak, they should come to the mic and.
Yeah.
I apologize, but it's a very important fact, it's not on the inventory, it doesn't count under the state of Massachusetts guidelines.
All right, thank you. All right.
That's not under our understanding.
You're gonna have to grab the mic. No, it's up there.
Yeah, it doesn't work very well.
Our understanding, this is a 40B project, and as a 40B project, as long as a twenty-five percent compliance to get the 40B project is, is all in order, that the entire number of units count, even the one.
Does it count towards the ten percent?
Yes, it does.
It absolutely does not.
It does not count towards the ten percent?
If it's a forty.
Did you return me in the interim? You said you were going to.
Yeah, I'm not.
I think it's fair to, you know, I can, you know how many 40B projects I do? The inventory, the SHI, I can show you the guidelines, I'll pull them up on my phone and show them to you.
You're gonna talk.
Got to grab the mic.
It does not count units that have buyers who earn more than the eighty percent or less of area median income. That's just the way it is. That's the regulations.
Period.
My understanding of those same regulations are, the only concern about the low-income units is that the low-income units, which do have to qualify, as he said, as low-income units, that has to constitute at least twenty-five percent of a 40B project. As long as there's twenty-five percent low-income units in the project, all the units in the project count on the SHI.
All right, you know what, we're not gonna argue this anymore.
May I finish my lengthy speech?
That is true, only if twenty-five percent in an apartment rental project. If twenty-five percent on a rental project are sold, or rather rented, to persons earning no more than eighty percent of area median income, yes, then a hundred percent of the units. Nothing to do with the situation.
You gotta grab them, okay. No, 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 we've had enough of this. We've just been going back. It's been two hours going through the same thing.
I just have the state form that says how much I have at that time.
I know. We've talked to our attorney. We are not allowed to tell you what he said. Attorney-client privilege.
That's your choice, I agree.
That's according to our town attorney. So if you don't like his statement, you could actually take it up with him, but what he says to us is attorney-client privilege. Mary Ann, is that correct?
It's treated confidential, but it's your.
If you're gonna talk, you speak into the mic, please.
You know, first of all, there's nothing that's per se, you know, secret or confidential. I respect and understand attorney-client.
Hey, I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
I respect and understand attorney-client confidentiality, absolutely, but you have every right to choose, for the purpose of public policy and discussion with an applicant, to share what the attorney said. I'm not telling you that I think you're wrong, I don't know what he said, you have every right not to disclose it, but it is not correct that you cannot share it. It's your choice, and ultimately, you know, with the public disclosure requirements and all, somebody could push and find out what, you know, what's going on in this application. I just thought that we were gonna get some information, I thought it was more factual to answer, like, some of the questions that were just asked, where you did receive erroneous answers from some town folks, that, that's what I thought he was gonna share with you, which would make sense to share with everybody, but that's all I want to say on that.
There were, there were questions that people had about how they, how they thought he probably should rule on it. Each person submitted their own questions to Mary Ann, sent to the town attorney. I did not send, I didn't have any questions.
Sure.
So I didn't say.
Again, it's your prerogative not to share it, I'm just saying that it's not illegal to, you know, discuss, and I would.
Okay, we've discussed this.
That's your prerogative. I thought we were gonna get some answers in terms of where the town was at and how moderate worked and whether they counted. Sorry if I misunderstood that I thought things were clear, sorry.
Yeah.
Last I checked with Mary Ann, there was nothing from the attorney.
Yeah, that's the other thing that's aggravating, because we had checked and you said apparently that, you know, there was nothing, so it's all right, shut us out, thanks.
I don't think that was really necessary, Mr. Veman.
I just have been to so many of these types of hearings, and usually information like that is shared, that's all I'm saying. I'm not asking, not, I'm not asking you to share his advice, that's the understanding.
Okay. Well, I don't know when you talked to her, but, Mary Ann, but last night I got an email from town attorney. So if you talked to her before last night.
That's okay.
That's number one. Number two, he has specifically asked us not to share it, it's confidential.
Again, that's your prerogative, thank you.
Okay. Jim, finish, please.
I don't know, I raised such a hullabaloo, I'm not sure I really want to continue. The inventory that I was referring to before I was interrupted was the inventory on the number of moderate houses there are. And what's bothersome, or thought-provoking, is the petitioner is asking for the maximum resale price, and has been fortunate enough to enjoy this wonderful program for so many years, that I'd like to see it continue with no properties removed from the inventory. And I think I'll stop there.
Brad, grab the mic if you would. Any comments, concerns, or anything?
Just that it was read into the record at the original hearing, that the restriction was to, excuse me, to be in perpetuity, and I believe that should stand.
Scott?
I agree with both Jim and Brad. I think it's a tough situation, but it seems to me that there has to be a happy median price that it can be sold and kept as a moderate income unit, and there is a price out there that somebody will pay.
Bill?
I have no additional comments.
Okay. While there's probably some level of hardship affecting Catherine McBrien, could be a compelling factor in favor of granting the waiver. She read well that the deed restriction terms at the time of her purchase and the waiver of the deed restrictions somewhat extraordinary action with respect to a 40B unit, which could encourage other similarly situated owners to seek the same relief. I've seen little or no evidence that the McBriens, excuse me, are willing to lower the price of the unit down to or below the maximum resale price of three hundred and thirty thousand six oh five. I believe you said its currently asking price is three sixty-five?
Sixty-four something.
Sixty-three.
Okay. Okay.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, has to be recognized, pleased by the chairman.
Let me, I'm not finished yet. Thank you. As we discussed a couple of weeks ago and tonight, Gail Kelleher is the director of the real estate section of the Housing Assistance Corporation, spoke to the McBriens and talked to them about lowering the price, could find a buyer, and, you know, I'm not sure that that has been what. I haven't seen any, any idea, any lowering the price whatsoever to get it sold, and I think there's probably a buyer out there, like you said. As a board, one thing we should always strive to be is consistent. Even though all cases stand on their own merit, I feel lifting the deed restriction in this 40B unit would set a precedent that would probably be detrimental to the town's needs for affordable slash moderate housing units, and also could encourage similar situation owners to seek the same relief. So that's really my thoughts on it, and I understand where they're coming from, and I think there's probably a way you could get it sold if you lowered the price. That's all I've got to say. So Bill, would you like to make a motion?
Okay, I just want to state that I'm making a motion in the positive and citing all the positives of the motion, and then I would ask the chairman to instruct the board to vote whether or not they agree with what I've read, or disagree, or allow, or not allow. So I make a motion to approve the request for a modification, a deed restriction modification on 37 Center Street by owner Catherine M. McBrien. Request for a modification to the moderate housing restriction set forth in the comprehensive permit issued, issued in 2004 under Mass. General Law, C dot four forty B, section twenty-one on property located, located in an R5 zoning district, map thirty-six parcel forty-seven D, Mashpee, Mass. And the board has determined that the applicant has met all the conditions of, for a modification under the Mass. General Law, section, Mass. General Law forty B, section twenty-one. Need a second.
Okay, we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Jim, how do you vote, for or against?
I vote against.
Brad?
Against.
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 Against. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
I understand, I've been being bullied.
I have a question. They were asking three sixty-four, was there a roll?
Okay.
It was the upper end price, not allowed to ask.
Check the weight, deny.
Three hundred and thirty thousand. Yes, to travel. She gets three sixty-four. She keeps it.
Two hours.
She's sold for three thirty, what does she have to do?
Denied.
If someone could buy you that lower price, you know, the problem is she wants maximum price. That's my understanding.
Brad?
Sixty-two Waterway. Yeah, I don't know about that one else. The possible is all done, every bit of this is done.
Yep, first new hearing, sixty-two Waterway.
Is that all set, Jim?
Yes.
All right. Jim, would you read the first new hearing?
Open the off the hearing on sixty-two Waterway. Petitioner Seawood Investments LLC requests a written finding under section one seventy-four dash seventeen and section one seventy-four dash twenty of the zoning bylaws to raise and replace a single-family dwelling on the property located in an R3 zoning district, parcel two hundred and eleven, in Mashpee, Massachusetts.
You're now share.
Okay.
Are you saving one for us, William?
He's, he's picking me.
We'll, we'll all share.
For a smaller man. Wait a minute, we got more.
We have more.
House plans.
Evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name is Kevin Corain, and I have the pleasure this evening of representing Seawood Investments LLC, the owner of the premises at sixty-two Waterway in the New Seabree development. The board should be very familiar with, with this particular location, there have been a number of buildings that have come, in the application, to raise and replace somewhat dated structures that exist along the various waterways and coves within the New Seabree development. This is one such building, as you can see, adjacent to Spinnaker Cove. I have provided the board with some photographs of the existing structure, and I've also provided the board with photographs of structures that are currently under construction or have been built in accordance with permits that the board has granted somewhat recently relative to raise and replace projects. Just to follow up on the brief outline that I've given the board, the property consists of about eleven thousand six hundred square feet, it has about a hundred and five feet of frontage along Waterway. The lot slopes from Waterway to Spinnaker Cove, about thirteen feet, which will accommodate the walkout that you see on the architectural plans that have been provided by Architec Associates. The single-family residence currently occupies about twenty-one oh seven square feet, which represents about eighteen point one six percent of the lot area, and it is a three-bedroom residence. As the board is well aware, the property is situated in the R3 zoning district, which requires a minimum lot size of forty thousand square feet, hundred fifty feet of frontage, and as such, this lot is a non-conforming lot. In addition to that, the board is also well aware of the fact that the current zoning requires a forty-foot setback from the public or private way, fifteen feet from either sideline and fifty feet from the abutting wetland resource area. The applicant, as, as, has been noted, has applied for a specific finding pursuant to the appropriate provisions of chapter one seventy-four seventeen of our bylaw to allow for the removal of the existing three-bedroom residence and the replacement of that three-bedroom residence with another three-bedroom residence. The structure, as it currently sits, is non-conforming in that it does not meet the fifty-foot setback from the wetland, it does not meet the front yard setback of forty feet, and also has a thirteen point one foot setback from its southerly boundary line. What is being proposed is a slight reduction in the front yard setback from the current twenty-five point four feet to twenty-two point one feet, an increase in the setback from the wetland from thirty-six feet to thirty-nine feet, and the elimination of the non-conforming side yard setback, creating a side yard setback of seventeen feet, where only thirteen point one feet is currently available. In evaluating the specific finding request, the board must look to whether or not what is being proposed is substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than what currently exists. The board must also look to determine whether or not there are adequate setbacks and sufficient area to provide parking in connection with the proposed use. I would also point out that notwithstanding the fact that there is a reduction of the front yard setback from twenty-five point four feet to twenty-two point one feet, the twenty-two point one is consistent with the average of the two structures on either side of this particular building, and as such, under the footnote set forth in the bylaw, they would be allowed to go to an even greater. of 17 feet, where only 13.1 feet is currently available. In evaluating the specific finding request, the board must look to whether or not what is being proposed is substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than what currently exists. The board must also look to determine whether or not there are adequate setbacks and sufficient area to provide parking in connection with the proposed use. I would also point out that notwithstanding the fact that there is a reduction of the front yard setback from 25.4 feet to 22.1 feet, the 22.1 is consistent with the average of the two structures on either side of this particular building. And as such, under the footnote set forth in the bylaw, they would be allowed to go to an even greater or closer distance to Waterway than what is currently proposed. There is a slight increase in lot coverage from the 18.16 to 19.94, but that is still within the 20% allowed under our bylaw. The project will entail an upgraded Title V system, and obviously it will conform to current building code requirements as they have significantly changed since this building was built back in the 70s. All in all, I suggest to the board that there is sufficient information for which the board could make the appropriate specific finding that what is being proposed here is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than what currently exists. In fact, it is becoming more and more consistent with the type of a development that is occurring in this particular neighborhood and has been occurring over the last 10 or so years as we've moved more from seasonal structures to more year-round structures and typically larger structures than what previously existed. If the board has any questions, I'll be more than happy to respond.
I have a question of a zoning enforcement officer. I see the proposed motion includes, and it may be a mistake, the fact that it's a variance, and yet the application is a written finding. Why do they differ? Is it your opinion that it requires a variance?
Maybe it's just a typo. Where's the?
Motion is a typo. The motion is a typo.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
The request was for a written finding.
We did not request a variance.
Right. And so that's just a mistake, I presume?
Well, yeah, I mean, when you read, when you read my
I did.
Report, there's only
And I'm wondering if one ties to the other.
Well, I don't know why he mentioned that other section. So if we want to jump into my report, make life easier, and I'll read it.
Go ahead.
The area is zone R3, and a small portion of this property is also within the pre-contact archaeological sensitive area listed as high. The applicant is seeking a written finding under Section 174-17 and 174-20 of the zoning bylaws to raise and replace a single-family dwelling. Here's where my question comes up, counselor. Not clear why the applicant is citing Section 174-20, which deals with a non-conforming structure that has been destroyed or damaged by fire, flood, lightning, wind, etc., which is subject to approval of the Board of Appeals. This office is not aware that this location has suffered any such damage. My understanding is a zoning enforcement officer, you use 20 if a building's been damaged or somewhere along those lines, that's non-conforming, but this is a willful tear-down rebuild, so you threw me a curve on this one, so.
Well, historically, and for some of the history, you have not been here.
That's a good thing, maybe.
That Section 20 has been actually used to supplement Section 17 because it does contain the language "or otherwise."
Well, that otherwise, in my opinion, the zoning enforcement officer is kind of a stretch. We include a lot in that. But as you and I both know, counselor, you've been before this board on many occasions and didn't add that little
217?
You can. All I'm doing is raising the question because he's never done it before.
Because it's the basis of the whole submittal, right?
I have not before, but it's not necessary, quite frankly.
Thank you, that's all I wanted to know.
So just so I understand, because it's the basis of the whole application, so you don't need 20, you only need 17, is that what you're saying?
I'm saying that that's probably true.
Okay.
But on that, I'm good.
Just trying to understand you because it's the basis.
Probably should refine the language of that particular section of the bylaw.
Only there? Okay.
The thing is, that word "otherwise" sort of throws things out into the gray area.
Exactly.
So which one don't we need?
20.
We don't need 20.
We don't need 20.
17 gives you the right to do it.
So it was advertised with 20, is that an issue?
Has an issue.
No.
We can, the board can make the determination that it's a non-issue.
Right, I could have
I was concerned that one morphed into a variance instead of a written finding.
I understand. I could have applied for a variance relief and then decided variance was not required.
Right.
I can withdraw.
It just seems logical that I'm probably going to be maybe making a motion, and the motion included a variance.
I don't, well, it shouldn't have been.
Okay.
It shouldn't have, but it depends on certain people's interpretation of what "or otherwise"
Good catch. You know, because, well, I read his letter, and I'm saying there's one morph into the other. Does the wrong application, 20, morph into a variance?
Some of its interpretation of "or otherwise" may not include the specific finding under 17.
Sorry for getting off track. At least he said he was sorry.
It's a good catch. Scott? Questions, comments?
I have a question, but it's, I don't think it's a zoning issue, so I'm going to bring it up with the building commissioner after.
So it has nothing to do with this project?
I don't think it has anything to do with, it has to do with this project, but I don't think it has anything to do with the zoning, what they're requesting.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's the one we're ready to start.
So it's like, I've got a question, but it's none of your business.
Thank you, sir.
I'm trying to think if it is, it's not a zoning issue, I don't think.
Bill Adom, any questions for?
We've got some comments. Conservation here, 62 Waterway, this project has been approved by Conservation. Board of Health, what do we have to say? 62 Waterway, proposed septic plan has been submitted and approved for three bedrooms. Septic permit must be obtained by licensed septic inspector prior to issuance of building permit. The rodent control inspection has been performed by the agent of the Board of Health as part of the demolition checklist. Contractor has been aware of asbestos inspection requirements. Floor plans must be reviewed. Dwelling limited to three bedrooms. Demolition checklist shall be completed prior to demo permit sign-off.
Did I miss something?
Well, you said must be reviewed, but the way I have it written in mine is floor plans have been reviewed.
Excuse me, correct, have been reviewed. Okay. Conservation.
Can I just take your attention and ask you if it's a zoning issue or not?
Fine. You said that very carefully.
Do you have the house plans there?
Nope.
Can someone hand the building commissioner, on page SK5?
Oh, I know where we're going with this.
I'm sure you do.
Mm-hmm. Continue.
Well, it's probably two things, right?
In the town of Mashpee, you can't have a third story that's more than 50% of the floors below. I don't consider the, a walkout is not a third story at all. We do them all the time. There's a lot of elevation on the left side, I guess it's the left side of the house. The right side's fine, but the left side is a lot of exposed foundation. I don't know if that's a zoning issue.
Would that be a height problem?
It said 35.
It says 35, but I understand what he's saying.
Well, the average grade, that's on the plan, the average grade, and I'm sure the engineers get the average grades right and everything, but.
It's a good question about three stories.
We've had this conversation, and I'm just, I don't know if it's a zoning issue or not.
Well, it may be just lack of better way of saying this is a, well, no disrespect, how's that sound, a poorly drawn bottom drawing, because if you take a look at the top, where you're looking at face-on
Front elevation.
Yeah, the front elevation, you'll see that it's higher.
It's just a walkout then, really. It becomes a walkout. Comes a basement that's a walkout, so it's not really
Well, that, no.
See, he's saying from that elevation, that's what it depicts because of that grade.
If you look at that elevation, the rear elevation, the right side shows those stairs, that's correct, but they're pushed. If you look at the left elevation, I'm just wondering if that is, be just brought more towards the rear. And I don't know if that's our jurisdiction or not.
It would be, because I think this here is this area right here.
It is, but you're looking
What does it say? Left, north.
Right, right, but see how this is drawn, it's not really clear.
And you know where I'm going with this?
I'm not sure, really, to be honest with you.
I'm trying to make this not a third floor.
Right.
So I'm trying to
And I would assume that, I've had enough experience with Tim Luff and the Architec Associates, that they're well aware that what they design, they typically wouldn't be designing something as a third floor.
And so, and has a vibe, but this has come up on another project, and that's the only reason I don't know
One person's call, he's sitting with a red shirt on.
I thought Tim might be
It seems, hey? You're killing me.
I don't think it's
He's boss.
I don't think it's a major deal to, I'm not going to tell you how to fix it, but
I don't think, I don't think 50% of the foundation is exposed is really what the question is. On this left, left northwest elevation, if I have, what Scott's saying, if there's 50% or more of this foundation open, then
It's a story.
There we go.
Okay.
So that's what the concern is.
The right side looks fine.
Right, and I, and I'm thinking that what I'm looking at here might not be the case, because, if I may approach, how's that?
The bench, isn't that cool?
I'm just going through others, so it's not an issue in the future.
Right, because see, I'm viewing this
Yep.
As here, because of stairways.
Very good.
So I get a feeling this wall is right here, so I don't have
You don't have
But this is so badly drawn.
Yep.
That's the clarification, we're going to need a time of permitting.
That's
All right.
That's why I was on the fence on what it'd bring up.
I agree, so you can make the pardon your way.
Well, he's not going to issue a bill unless he gets clarification.
We have to make it as a condition.
Okay, now, all right, so here we go.
The wall has to be moved to make sure that half of the foundation is exposed.
It's a condition.
All right, all right, so
We'll condition it.
Right. And what's that condition going to say?
So we don't have this on other projects.
Final approval by
Building inspector?
Building inspector.
Building inspector, that no more than
And it's
Excuse me, Commissioner.
Right.
No more than 50% of the foundation is visible, exposed.
That's good, there'd be no going
Was that pretty good, huh?
Yeah.
Good catch.
It's in my mind, trust me.
Oh.
All right.
There we go.
Anybody have any comments, questions? I think we've read anything in. Anybody in the audience have any questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none? Ron, would you like to make a motion?
I would love to. Like to make a motion that we approve a written finding to Seawood Investments LLC's LLC of 62 Waterway, and we're issuing the written finding under Section 174-17. Do you need it purported also, 20, counsel?
No.
Okay. Of the zoning bylaw to raise and replace a single-family dwelling property located in R3 zoning district, map 105, parcel 211, Mashpee, Mass. In making the motion, I state that the board has determined that the applicant meets all the conditions of written finding under Mass. General Law 48, Section 6. Number two, the plot plan referenced will be a proposed house and subsurface sewage disposal system upgrade prepared for Chris and Nancy Burden, 62 Waterway, Mashpee, Mass. Scale 1 inch equals 20, dated May 11, 2017, drawn by MRT TB, checked by JER, job number 16186. Revision, question mark. Are there any revisions? This is very important.
On the
There are no revisions.
No, but do we have anything we got to read in?
Well, I'll continue with that, but, so there are no revisions, I don't, so there's no question, there are no revisions. Title, site plan and SSDS profile drawing number B. 24-75. House plans, Burden Residence, 62 Waterway, Mashpee, Mass, Architec Associates, Inc., First Law Plan Job Number 1618, date 26 May 2017. Scale is noted, drawn KMW, issued for review, SK2, SK3, second floor plan, SK4 elevations, SK5 elevations. Also conditioned upon all the town department comments as read into the record. Also conditioned upon the applicant approving or issuing to the building inspector
Commissioner.
Building commissioner, I'm sorry, whip me later. The fact that no more than 50% of the foundation will be exposed on final completed grading.
Side, side elevation.
Side elevation. Well, 50% total, right?
No.
It's not?
It has the building code.
Okay, so it's 50% of the side elevation.
Just because you have the walkout.
Okay, 50% of the side elevation will not be exposed. I believe that is the extent of my motion.
All those in favor?
We have to, there's a few comments we didn't read in.
I think we read them all, didn't we?
And I also stated
Project was approved, we read that?
And I, and I conditioned upon all town board's comments read into the
I don't remember reading them. We got caught up in that, sorry.
Okay.
You're on a roll tonight.
No, no, you should have just stayed home.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you very much.
Very good. Thank you. Okay, pass the paper, if you would.
Works for me. You want me to stamp every
Any more plans on it, guys?
Yes.
Sign the correct name.
Maryam, please.
Come on, now.
I already have one.
No, you're lost, this is all your fault.
Yeah, I know, so I got you. Sign in the right place, Scotty.
Got your birthday next week?
Red box.
Is it tomorrow?
What'd he say?
His birthday tomorrow.
Whose?
William.
Oh, William, happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Your old goat.
Is this how you spend your birthday?
Uh-huh.
Wow. I've got a different meeting tomorrow night.
That it?
We have a couple.
All right, Jim?
Absolutely.
Would you read the next new hearing?
Opening the hearing at 73 Mercantile Way. Patricia, the petitioner, Roland McCracken, requests a special permit under 174-25 (G) (6) and 174-25 (G) (9) of the zoning board bylaws to allow for construction of a 15-unit, 9,939 square foot boat storage building and an outside gravel service boat storage area on the property in an I-1 zoning district, map 88, parcel 94, Mashpee, Massachusetts. Owner of record, Suzanne Rogers.
Okay, sitting on this would be the five regular members.
Jesus. Should we keep in any of this? There's a million of them.
Go right ahead.
Good evening, again, for the record, my name is Kevin Corrane, and in this particular matter, I have the pleasure of representing Richard McCracken, the prospective purchaser of a property situated in 73
Kevin, if you would, excuse me, thank you.
Mercantile Way. Richard is here with me this evening. Should the board have any questions for Richard? Also, again, this evening with me is Matt Eddy of Baxter &amp; I. Matt has prepared the appropriate site plan in connection with the project. And last but not least, Joal Janquera, who is the prospective building contractor who is engaged by Mr. McCracken to construct
I think it's for G9.
...the building on the site in question. As you can see from the plan, this plan is situated on Mercantile Way, which is in the Mashpee I-1 industrial zone. The lot itself consists of 159,560 square feet and has 300-plus linear feet along Mercantile. It also abuts Great Hay, which is an unimproved way, as you can see, on the southerly, south-easterly section of the lot. This parcel will be serviced by a public water supply, and there is a proposed independent onsite subsurface sewage disposal system as part of the overall development of the site. This matter has gone before the Mashpee Site Plan Review Committee, and they have recommended approval in connection with the plans that have been submitted. What the applicant is proposing here is the construction of a 9,939 square foot industrial storage building, which really is somewhat typical of a number of the buildings that have already been constructed in the industrial zone. (6) and 174-25 (G) (9) of the zoning board bylaws to allow for construction of a 15-unit, 9,939 square foot boat storage building and an outside gravel service boat storage area on the property in an I-1 zoning district. Map 88, parcel 94, Mashpee, Massachusetts. Owner of record Suzanne Rogers.
Okay, sitting on this would be the five regular members.
Jesus.
I don't know what we have here.
Should we keep in any of this? There's a million of them.
Wow. Go right ahead.
I'll get off.
Good evening, again for the record, my name is Kevin Corain, and, uh-
He's going?
In this particular matter, I have the pleasure of representing Richard McCracken, the prospective purchaser of a property situated in 73-
Kevin, if you would, excuse me, thank you.
Mercantile Way. Uh, Richard is here with me this evening. Should the board have any questions for Richard? Also again this evening with me is Matt Eddy of Baxter &amp; I. Matt has prepared the appropriate site plan in connection with the project. And last but not least, Joal, Joal Genquera, who is the prospective building contractor who is engaged by Mr. McCracken to construct-
I think it's for G9.
-the building on the site in question. As you can see from the plan, this plan is situated on Mercantile Way, which is in the Mashpee I-1 industrial zone. The lot itself consists of 159,560 square feet and has 300-plus linear feet along Mercantile. It also abuts Great Hay, which is an unimproved way, as you can see, on the southerly, south-easterly section of the lot. This parcel will be serviced by a public water supply, and there is a proposed independent onsite subsurface sewage disposal system as part of the overall development of the site. This matter has gone before the Mashpee Site Plan Review Committee, and they have recommended approval in connection with the plans that have been submitted. What the applicant is proposing here is the construction of a 9,939 square foot industrial storage building, uh- which really is somewhat typical of a number of the buildings that have already been constructed in the industrial zone, either in industrial zoned areas or in the Mashpee Industrial Park. The building will be separated, at least is contemplated to be separated, into a maximum of 15 separate units, as you can see on the site plan that we have provided. The building is also proposed to include a common restroom facilities, men and ladies' room, handicap accessible on the northerly end of the building, and the building will be equipped with a sprinkler system for purposes of dealing with any fire event. Each unit, as you could see on the plan, is equipped with an overhead door to accommodate the storage boats or vessels. That is the intent, the intended use of this particular building is for the inside storage of boats or vessels, and it is a use that is allowed under the zoning bylaw and in fact is a use which the board has previously granted up off of Wags Road in the I-1 zoning district. The applicant is also proposing some outside storage of vessels, as you can see in the highlighted blue area. The highlighted yellow area is the, is the building. There will be two size units in the building, and all the outside bays will be consistently sized for the storage of outside vessels. It is a one-story building so that it can accommodate these vessels, and the overhead doors will be sized such that there should be no problem in being able to move a vessel into the building on a trailer. The general criteria for special permit relief is set forth in chapter 174-24(c). The board must determine that relief can be granted without adversely impacting health and safety concerns, creating an excessive demand on community facilities, decreasing surface or groundwater quality or air quality, adversely affecting the environment, wildlife habitat, estering concerns, or otherwise impacting traffic, public lands, or neighboring properties. As this proposed use as a boat storage use will largely be used actively essentially in the winter months, summer months for the most part, the boats will not be in the facility, but will be located hopefully for the owners on the water. And most of the activity, as I said, will occur during the winter months when folks may decide that they want to work on their boats during the winter months. It appears to be a need that is not readily addressed, and Mr. McCracken believes that it is something that will be attractive and that should be fully occupied with folks who seek to store their expensive and larger vessels on the inside of a building as opposed to outside or on storage racks. As I said, it's a relatively passive use, it's a use that the board has previously allowed in the I-1 zoning district, and I suggest to the board that there, none of the interests that are sought to be protected, that are specifically delineated under section 124, 174-24(c), will be adversely impacted by this relatively passive use in this industrial zone. If the board has any questions relative to the engineering and the site development, Matt can probably address those. If the board has any questions as to the operation of the facility, Rick can probably address that. I did provide Mary Ann, 'cause there was a, a, raised at the site plan review, there was a request that we provide some initial outline or draft of what might be considered condominium documents. I have done that, I've provided those to Mary Ann, and she has them in the file. I didn't think the board was, be all that interested in reading through a master deed and condominium trust during the course of the hearing.
So these would be considered condominiums?
Correct.
Mm-hmm.
Is, so there's one association that's gonna be handled, this whole thing?
That's correct.
So if I could, sorry, I'm playing before-
Please.
So in those documents, does it make reference to any type of maintenance outlined on these plans of the drainage areas, i.e. rain guards, et cetera?
That'll all be part of the, that'll all be part of the common area expenses.
Right, but I just want to make sure it's a line item budget. My point is, is one of the things that's dear to my heart is we continue to have rain guards, right? We continue to make statements like, "A visual inspection shall be made at all four-bays water quality, inland, and whatever," and it says anything over one inch, you know, of silt has to be removed. The only problem is, once we approve it, who removes it? Who inspects it? And it's a great scenario because it's an association now, right? So we now can lay it on someone instead of just a landowner someday who probably, because we have a lot of them throughout town that are never gonna be maintained, probably.
The condominium documents don't specifically refer to rain guards or drainage areas, they refer to the specific obligation-
But they could make reference, they could make reference to our possible approval, which may include that statement.
Well, you can certainly condition your approval upon the requirement that a maintenance plan be provided to the board as a condition of the approval, and we can certainly provide the board with that, with that information.
Well, but we could also require that in your condominium documents, it makes reference to our approval.
Uh, we can, the intent was not to create a final set of condominium documents.
Yeah, no, and it would be an easy thing to include.
Yeah, we can certainly reference, reference the, that obligation of the condominium association to do that, no question.
I, I just think it makes sense, and then they understand when they buy into it what they've gotta do.
Sure.
Budget will include it, and it makes sense, and there's somebody finally that, that can do this, that we can make sure they do it. And, and I have one other question, if I may. Has Charlie Rowley looked at this?
I don't believe so.
'Cause historically, whenever we see this type of development, such as drainage four-bays, rain guards, drainage calculations, which far exceed our intelligence, and I don't want to be holding the project up, because I think it's a great project, I think it makes sense to go forward, it's all about, this is taxable property, real estate tax and all the rest, and so, I'm not trying to be negative, I'm just trying to, and if we can fast-track a Charlie review, if the board sees that necessary, I'm not trying to slow it up, I-
Well, we just approved one recently that-
We just approved one-
Exactly, I was gonna say, there was one approved recently.
In the same neighborhood.
Yeah, that Charlie didn't-
Because I can tell you, the last one, I sat on the board, we looked at drainage calcs, and we actually had him look at it.
I don't know if it's because of side of town, that was on, off of 130.
Yeah.
We just approved one in the same neighborhood.
Yeah, well.
Well, it brings up a good point. We used to have Charlie look at all these.
Yes.
And the question is, how come we're not?
I wasn't brought up at the last one, and we approved it.
I can tell you, when you're looking at drainage of this, I'm, you know, I have a little bit of drainage knowledge, I mean, just design a hundred-year storm, what are your Q factor, blah, 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 but, you know, I'm not an engineer, and I'm certainly not gonna ask the questions, because the answers you give me aren't gonna exactly fit here, 100%. And, and, you know, and we've had some engineers come in front of this board that say Charlie would have no problem with it. I very rarely, I mean, Charlie's an intelligent man who protects our community, and, and I've never seen him look at a plan and not have some type of input.
May I ask a question? You mentioned something about rain guards, that's the same as an oil separating drainage.
They do have, well, sometimes oil separators within them.
Yeah.
But you can have a rain guard without an oil separator.
Okay, I just-
You can have one without the other, but if it does, there's maintenance involved in that too, which I'd like to- And again, my goal is not to hold it up, okay, really isn't, and I want, I want you to build it and do well and all that stuff as one member.
Well, I guess we go through a site plan process.
Right.
You know, which has been established to bring every board and every agency that is involved in a project of this nature into the process early on. Had that been a concern, I would have had expected that, that Charlie's review would have been something that would have been brought up at that time, so that we wouldn't come here and find ourselves, you know, in a-
Can we correct that problem?
I agree with you, but the question is, it used to happen, why doesn't it happen now?
I mean, I thought we were going down the right road.
We don't make the rules.
Last time we did this.
All right, if I may, okay, just to backtrack a little, this project did go through plan review, which was reviewed by various department heads. You had the, the police, DPW, town planner, conservation, border health, myself, the town manager-
Fire.
Fire department. Yeah, okay. Will you please sit down, sir, you're disrupting us. You know, looking at and raising all sorts of questions. I understand your comments and concerns, and if it was gonna come from anybody, I figured it would've came from the town planner, if anyone would have raised it. But I also understand what you're saying. Honestly, I don't know, there's nothing in the bylaw that says that this has to go through.
Let me tell you where I think the hole is. If in fact, and I know this went to site plan, so if this were under the planning board's venue and approval, Charlie Rowley sits there, and he approves or disapproves, and, and they automatically give it to Charlie, every single time.
And they've got a budget for that.
Exactly, now it comes to, well, we have the ability to, and as an applicant, it's happened to me all the time, they fund it, right? So my point is, is design review needs to understand, or site plan review, that if in fact we've got plans that have any drainage cal, or any of that stuff, right, that's above and beyond me, I'll speak for me only, then it needs to go to someone that has more intelligence than me to say yea or nay, to talk to that gentleman there. And because we're, we're, we're a board that's reviewing plans, for me I'm speaking, that are far in excess of my ability, and so they should be at design review or site plan, if it's coming to this board for approval, it should automatically get kicked to an engineer of some sort.
And I'm not disagreeing, I mean, I can bring it up at the next hearing, but once again, you had key individuals, i.e. the head of the DPW. If anybody was gonna be concerned about drainage issues, I figured it would've came from that department, and they could've asked. Same thing as with the town planner, who would've said, you know, this needs to go. I mean, um, right now, I don't think there's much we can do at this stage, but at the next hearing, I can definitely say, hey, here's a new policy that, you know, get them all to vote on, then it takes care of it at that level.
Yeah.
And then puts it into the system, because what can happen is, is as counselor knows, and this gentleman knows, this gentleman knows, is that there's a packet that you pick up, and it tells you in that packet everything that's required. So maybe there's gonna be verbiage in there stating that drainage systems, blah, 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 whatever's gonna be reviewed by a town or a drainage engineer, whatever.
My attitude is, anything that's above our pay, but, look, I can only speak for myself, anything that's above my pay grade, if, I find it very hard to vote for or against. And I'm not gonna have a problem with this, but in the future, I'm gonna have a problem. Anything that says, here's drainage cal, because I'll tell you what, if this thing doesn't work, and it floods that street, right, and they've got their occupancy, and all the units are sold out, right, and it becomes an association, there's gonna be 20 or 30 people standing in the audience saying, but this board approved it. I'm not-
You're required to maintain all your drainage on site, and beyond that-
I got you, but then it's in the association.
I mean, you are fortunate, this board is fortunate to have people like yourself and like Scott, who have some background in reading and understanding plans. You know, 90% of the boards of appeals and planning boards that exist, they're just made up of laypersons-
But shouldn't they-
That don't have background in regard to reading plans and everything else.
Maybe it's not a discussion for tonight, 'cause I agree with what you're saying, we need to move forward with this, but I believe the following, somewhere at site plan level, there's gotta be statement that, hey, if it goes above our pay grade, somebody better look at these plans, because it isn't fair to this community to just say, I'm gonna, you know, I'm gonna approve this, even though I have no clue what those calculations mean. I have, I don't have the ability to ask.
And I think to your point, the, again, for the record, Matthew Eddy, I'm a professional engineer, um, you know, to your point, and to Mike's point, one, had that been a requirement that was noted previously, absolutely, I-
I got you.
I work well with Charlie, I know Charlie very well, he knows well, you could probably call him and mention my name to him, and he would feel very comfortable in the one, for what that's worth. But also, as Mike stated, you know, Catherine Laurent with DPW, so, you know, the DPW director does review this, and they, you know, she does consider and look at drainage, roads, circulation, et cetera, traffic, so if there was any, you know, undue concern on her part, that would be raised at plan review as well. And then finally, as a professional engineer, my responsibility of the plans, and prepare the plans, and put my seal on those plans, I stand behind those plans, so as you talk about down the road, it is my responsibility regardless of who reviews it, that I need to do the, my due diligence and do the proper design and review and what I present to this board or, or any board. So as a professional engineer, that's just a requirement.
And I got you, and I'm not, my goal is to not hold this up tonight. I'm not talking about that, I think you have a, a perfect defense of saying, hey, we did what everybody else did, fine, I got you, I'm okay with that, and I'll just, just to close real quick, I think we gotta do something so it doesn't happen again. Learn from this one, and let's do something at the site plan or whatever level that says, hey, if this comes in front of us, somebody, somebody has to say, I've checked the calculus, I've done my, my work, and it might be Catherine, although I've never seen Catherine taken to that level, it's always been, for us, since I've been here, it's always been, right, Charlie Rowley. Now, that doesn't mean it has to be him, but somebody has to say, I've done the calculations, I've sat down, I've looked at these plans, and they're fine. I mean, it has from the town standpoint. We're, we're signing off on stuff we have-
Totally agree with you.
I agree as well, and I think that when it comes to us, we have to be confident that it's gone through the process prior to getting to us.
Yeah.
And we're confident that the right people have checked off and checked out and gone through this and reviewed with those gentlemen what is on those plans, by the time it gets to us, we can say, yeah, just like we do with all the other comments from town departments.
Right.
We can also say, it has been reviewed by site plan, design review, and they're confident, they're, they're good with it, we can read that into the record, just like we do the other departments.
As one person, I'm more than willing to move forward with this application tonight. I think it's important that we put some things, we asked to have something put in the condo docks in reference to cleaning, and that's a, but you know what, I'm not gonna lay the, all this on this applicant, because frankly, he's correct in the statement, hey, well, tell me the stuff, and I'll do it, right? That's not fair. But I think it's like the 20 square foot, right, the 20% coverage, we've, we've trained our applicants, and they understand it now, we should get to the point now where, hey, if you're coming in with drainage calcs and all the rest, have someone look at it in this town, this town should require it.
Like we get comments from border health, we get a, we should get a comment from DPW.
But she's looking at, see, I think she's looking at it as-
I'm not looking at that.
The row DPW, she, no, I bet you she'll tell you, in my opinion, question mark, I didn't look at drainage calculations, I didn't look at the various things in depth that an engineer would look at.
Yeah, if you do the same thing as the building department, you look at a set of plans, you can't tell if it's built correctly, you have to go by the structural engineer's stamp and, with like this stamp, and say, he's done his job.
Correct.
Well, but I can tell you, very rarely, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't know of your experience, but I've never seen a plan, I would doubt very much that you would submit this plan right here to Charlie Rowley. I would doubt, I would believe that Charlie Rowley would have something to say about something.
Charlie will always come up with some kind of comment.
Thank you! See my point? And now, well, now whether that, whether that's gonna be a huge issue or a small issue, I've seen in cases where Charlie's come up with something where an engineer missed it, hey, we're all, you know, we make mistakes, right, and, and it was fixed. So my point is, I think from a town standpoint, we should require that. So I'm, I'm, I'm okay with it, I think we gotta do that.
I think you need to-
I don't wanna beat a dead horse.
You probably need to take that up with the-
I agree.
-town manager, you know, to determine what-
The town planner-
The consultant.
Whenever it goes in front of the planning board, Charlie Rowley's involved.
Yeah.
Automatically.
If this plan went to the planning board, Charlie would be looking at it.
Charlie is the onsite consultant to the planning board, paid consultant-
Right, but this didn't go, this, did you go in front of the planning board on this?
There was no need. Here's my point, do you, if you brought this to the planning board, Charlie Rowley would've looked at it, and Charlie Rowley would've had input. That's all my point. You brought it to a different board, because it just so happens, our zoning requires you to bring it to a different section, us, and we don't have the ability like they don't, but we don't have the person to look at it like they do. And we need a person that look at it like they do, period.
But that's why we go to plan review initially.
Well, I got you, there's a hole there, though, there's no question, we gotta fill the hole. So I, 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 look, I don't wanna beat a dead horse anymore.
I still have a question that I haven't been able to ask.
Really? It's, it's too late.
Go ahead.
I, has anything been said or brought up, and maybe they have, how do they control with their boats? There's obviously fluids and liquids, and how is that controlled, that it isn't just dumped into the ground with people working on their own boats?
Do we get anything from fire at all on this?
The, uh-
Well, not fire, I'm thinking more border health. Just impact on the ground.
All the, they're a tight tank system that is part of this construction.
We have no comments.
Leave that up to Matt, I guess, to elaborate on, but that's to prevent any spills from going anywhere but into a tight tank that will be pumped out, period.
Same thing with like bottom painting and all, any kind of-
Within the building, there are flood drain systems that go-
Well, that's in the building, I'm talking about the outside boat storage, can they Can they work on the boats outside?
At design review, they cover all of this. The problem is, they've given us no feedback.
You, you sit on design review, right?
Plan review.
I read the Board of Health comment.
Look at the color of the houses. Different.
So they, they did not come in front of a board yet that you sat on, in reference to this plan?
Well, they would have, but I wasn't there, so. They couldn't have the meeting.
So if you can't have, if you can't have sufficient numbers to have a design review committee meeting, you can't punish the applicants who want to come before the town to get, but we applied.
Couldn't agree with you more. But the, but, but on the flip side, then the, then the town needs to recognize, there could be some pushback.
And quite frankly, design review is primarily intended to deal with the buildings, not with the site. Site plan.
Rest assured, rest assured, as one member of this board, I think it makes sense that somebody else is looking at these plans, because they're far above my pay grade. And not these plans, the future plans.
If they're above your pay grade, they're way above mine.
Can I read the Board of Health comment?
Please do.
Board of Health comment, 73 Mergantile Way, Board of Health comment, site and septic plans are scheduled to be reviewed on July 20, 2017, Board of Health public meeting.
Well, you know what? It's not going to be approved unless they approve it anyway, correct?
They would have signed off on the term it anyway.
That, that's a given.
Well, he, he wasn't at the plan review, but he had comments at plan review that he had submitted.
At plan review as well.
He actually said, he talked about the exterior boat storage.
Wanted to cover all the baser, there's no.
Conservation says property is not within. What other comments do we have?
Okay. Let me just fix that.
73 Mergantile Way, this is from inspections. The area is zoned I-1. A small portion of this property is also within the pre-contact archaeologically, post-contact archaeologically sensitive area listed as high. Applicant is seeking a special permit under 17425G6 and 17425G9. Zoning bylaws allow for construction of a 15-unit, 9,939-square-foot boat storage building, and an outside gravel surface boat storage area. So you know what to do on the sensitivity as high.
If I may?
Please.
Just to add to the members' question, why didn't you go to the planning board? It was under 10,000.
No, no, I got, I understand why I didn't go to plan. My, no, but my point is, just because it, just because it didn't go to planning board doesn't mean it shouldn't have the thorough review. And that means an engineer. That's internal. We'll have that conversation, I think, later.
That's right.
We will?
I think we should.
I agree.
Thank you.
I think everybody agrees with that, don't they?
Yes.
No, no, no.
Agreed.
Oh, Lord. Okay. Questions about the plan? Comments, concerns? Are two experts right here?
One expert.
Three.
He's, he's actually reviewed the drainage count, so he agrees with it.
I've been doing this a long time, and I didn't even know that half of that foundation had to be exposed.
All right. Tell me about the rinse area. Where does the rinse go to? I assume one of these little areas here? How does it get there?
Yeah, the rinse area is just set up, it's just going to be basically a hose bib just for, you know, rinsing off the salt water off the exterior of the boat. It's not meant for power washing the boats or anything. And then it will go in through a catch basin and into a, the fore bay area. That's all, that's for.
Okay.
Very simple, kind of rinse-off area is what that's intended to be for.
Okay, there's going to be boat storage inside the building as well as out. And I assume the fire department and Board of Health talked about flammable liquids, et cetera, oil?
What did they say to you about what they?
What did they have to say about it?
Glenn's comments at plan review, which, it sounds like you have a comment that's just a little bit, you know, shorter here, but he said, the Board of Health has no restrictions on fuel stored in the boats, and that the volume is not considered part of the bulk storage capacity limit. That was one of his comments. He also says, in a perfect world, no fuel or oil should be stored in the boats, but I know that the fire department has opposing views when it comes to the fuel left in the gas tanks. So it was, that was all discussed with, you know, fire and with Board of Health. As far as fuel in the bill, in the, in the boat when they're stored, it's up to the owner and what they want to do. Again, there's, there is opposing thoughts on that. I mean, you know, some, the fire department prefers to see more fuel in the boat as opposed to less fuel.
Really?
Because of vapors and fumes, et cetera. So and then, and for the, the boats in the building, again, there is a, as far as drippings, et cetera, there is.
Is this a sprinkled building?
I was more concerned with the boats outside, people doing work on their boats outside, like bottom painting and changing fluids, and they're just hitting the ground.
Yeah, and again, the Board of Health, he had.
Was that a condo issue?
Well, that's what I'm thinking. I mean, we got some, we got, we have some ability here with this condo dock.
You've got a boat that leaks, it's sitting on the ground, and it's sitting there all winter leaking.
But here, again, this was one, and I can give you, this is actually a copy I made. This, you know, came from Glenn. He says, there is no requirement for the boats to be stored on asphalt to contain spills or to be stored inside, so the Board of Health has no comments.
But there is a containment area in these plans, right?
In case there was a leak, in other words.
But I mean, for the, for the boats that are stored outside, they're stored, they're on a gravel lot. So if there was, again, they're stored there, they're not intended to be worked on, et cetera, they're, but if there are any, if there was any.
Can they work on their boats here?
Are they allowed to work on their boats there, though?
Well, I mean, under the. But if I can too, just for the record, which this was part of the plan review comments, this is a copy of Glenn's comments that were submitted to plan review that went through.
Yeah, I'm, I don't have a problem with this. I'm just, it's just a thought to me, and I just see people down there working on their boats.
You should have been asked at plan review.
Exactly right.
And we're not getting the information.
Well, again, we're assuming, and we've done this for the last 10 years, if it's gone through plan review, and we get comments, we read them into the record. If we don't, we assume that plan review did their job.
Okay.
I have some comments about plan review, we should probably, a little later, we have a conversation. So just to qualify again, so do you envision people working on their boat there?
For the record, I'm sorry.
For the record, I'm Rick McCracken. I live at 334 Catuit Bay Drive in Catuit. To answer your question, I do envision that some minor work would take place.
Yeah.
I don't envision major work. Without sounding overly restrictive, my intent here is for this to be a, a very secure, a very high-quality type of facility, with people that are, that have boats that, there aren't opportunities to, to store their boats inside. And so this will be a facility where they could own and secure their own space, you know, for five years, 10 years, whatever, while they own the boat. And as, as far as the outside storage is concerned, I anticipate that those are, are people that, that want to have their, their boats stored behind, you know, a fenced, secure area, where there's ongoing security, where there's not a lot of people coming in and out, where, where items may disappear, and things of that nature. So I, I anticipate that the majority of any type of significant work would be done at a marina. And that there, there would, however, I'm sure, be some level of maintenance, you know, polishing of the hull, and, you know, things, things of that nature.
How many people?
I'm sorry.
How many people are going to work here?
I don't know if I could answer that with a direct, with a specific number.
Ballpark.
But 30, there'd be 30 boats there. Some boats may have a single person working at it from time to time. Other times, they're, you know, where it requires, you know, more than one person, there may be a couple of people.
Are you talking employees, or just people on site?
Well, where I'm going is, I don't see any parking. Am I missing something?
From a zoning perspective, the parking under warehouse storage is only five parking spaces required. If you look at, on sheet 3.0, under the zoning table, there's five spaces required. You actually have parking in front of each overhead door, so there's actually 15 spaces that if I was a, if I owned the condo unit and I had my boat in there, I could be parking my car in front of the overhead door. What we actually did on the plan at, at Mike's recommendation and requirement is, because five just under zoning was required under the warehouse storage, he actually asked us to put striping on the pavement in front of five of the units. So you'll see five there striped, but again, you have 15-plus parking spaces, being able to park in front of each overhead door. We also added a handicap accessible striped space as well at, at Mike's request.
So if these are all condos, Board of Health had no problems with just one men's room, one women's room, and mechanical sprinkler room for all 15 condos?
That is a discussion I think that we'll be having with the board. I mean, Glenn, it was not brought up at plan review, but Glenn did discuss that with me after, when he was asking me questions about the restroom, and I told him that it was a common restroom. And I believe, you know, Rick's intent and the way it will be set up is it'll be code access, so that, you know, unit owners and people who are throwing their boats there have a key code access to the restrooms. And so I conveyed that to Glenn, and that will be discussed at the Board of Health hearing, which is scheduled for next week. They did not have an available hearing between plan review and here, they came to July 6 hearing, but postponed, so 20th was the first.
So you've got to go to Board of Health and to?
Just Board of Health.
Okay.
Which he, so he's saying, this is Glenn's checklist, he's saying he'd like to include these conditions when in fact you are submitted and he, and you're seeking your approvals. He's saying that these would be part of those, these, these will be all conditions.
Mr. Eddy supplied us with this, Glenn's comments from the meeting, and some of my questions are answered on this, but we weren't given this.
Yeah, I, I've never seen.
Glenn didn't, yeah.
It's from Glenn, but we didn't get it, but it answers some of my questions.
Pretty good stuff in there.
So I could have wasted 10 minutes, 15 minutes.
So the question comes is, I mean, we can condition on like condo docs, including all this stuff, and a, you know, we can, we can condition, or you can wait, it's the other, the other.
Well, I, I agree with it. Condition it on condo docs and conclusion of our comments.
No.
And condition it that Board of Health approves before you issue a building permit.
No problem.
And I, and I would make the fall in common, if I may, that the condo doc should include all input from all boards of committees, so that would include these specific things if the, so, if, if the Board of Health wants to say that there'll be, you know, no, no nuisance created, that means the spills will be considered a nuisance. So the condo docs could state, you know, that, would refer to that. I, I can make the motion that would make it pretty tight, I think, and would not be a hindrance to the applicant. It would just be a condition to the association that they need to understand these things. And it's part of the record anyway. If you went deep enough, we'd just make sure it's part of the document. And it's not going to, it wouldn't affect my thoughts buying there, just you need to do it right, that's all. Does that make sense?
How is operation on this would be? Seven days a week?
Yes, what we anticipate is that there'll be a daily site visit to the property for inspection purposes, just to make sure that, that everything is, is operating properly, that the, that, you know, the condition of the, of the bathrooms are appropriate, that the, the property is being maintained with respect to, to mowing of the lawns, or plowing, or, or cleaning the trash removal and things of that nature. There will not be onsite management, but there'll be daily.
So it's kind of like a storage unit where somebody owns a unit, they go in, open up, that type of thing?
That's correct. That is correct.
Great idea.
Thank you.
And as Rick said, it is anticipated that it will be secure, there'll be a key card system to get in and out, key card systems for the bathrooms and things of that nature.
I'd want that if I had my boat there.
Well, I'm just thinking, potentially of hours of operation, you know, it's a special permit they're looking for. One of the things on a special permit is noise.
But we are in an industrial zone area, and I think the only thing near us is the cemetery. So I don't.
Well, you are at this point.
I don't think that it's residential, I don't think there's any residential areas butting this particular site, so, you know, I don't imagine that, that any news that's noise that's created.
I think that's like a town bylaw type thing anyways, you can't do.
It's part of the special permit. You're not allowed to create excessive noise, blah, blah, blah.
Yeah, and, and there's time limits.
Right, and that's why I'm asking the question.
Yeah, and if I can, and, and I also would like to state that one of the things that Glenn brought up is, one of the requirements that the Board of Health is going to say is, no nuisance will be created, which certainly sound would be a nuisance, right?
Sure.
So that's just one more thing that I think we can just make sure that all the board's comments are included and made reference to in the condo docs. And at that point in time, when they buy, they read their condo docs, they know what they can and cannot do, clean, issue, done, buy. And, you know, and being a boat owner, I wouldn't want to be there, you know, at 10:00 at night making a noise. I mean, you don't have to be. So, you know, I think it's common sense stuff, as long as people use common sense.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? Have we read everything in?
Think so. We're not going to.
All comments?
No, because it's.
No, it's, it will be, and it's indirectly will be read in, the way I got to make the motion.
Exactly.
Okay. I suppose it wouldn't hurt to read them in, one by one. Would you read them in?
Well, they have to, okay. I'll read it the way it's written, and it says, hello all, my comments regarding the boat storage are below. Bullet item one, we have exte, we have exterior boat storage at several locations in town, Bosens Marine, the storage facility on Route 28, and the former location of Dry Harbor Marine at 14 Wags Road. Number two, in a perfect world, no fuel, oil, or, or oil should be stored in the boats, but I know that the fire department has opposing views when it comes to fuel left in the gas tanks. Three, the Board of Health has no restrictions on fuel stored in the boats, and the volume is not considered part of the bulk storage capacity limit. Number four, the Board of Health will set commercial restrictions on the property. When the septic and site plan come before the board for approval, the commercial requirements are attached for your review. Five, one of the requirements is that no nuisance be created. That means that spills will be considered a nuisance, along with a violation of Massachusetts contingency plan. And the last one, there is no requirements for the boats to be stored on asphalt to contain spills, or to be stored inside, so the Board of Health has no comments further and approves, approves the as presented, with the condition that the site and septic plan come before the Board of Health for approval. I'll not be at the meeting, but Ronnie will attend for me. She may alter the above as the information was changed at the meet, always changes at the meeting. Thanks, Glenn.
Okay, thank you. Anybody in the audience have any questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, Ron? Would you like to make a motion?
I would. I would. I'd like to make a motion that we issue a special permit to Richard McCracken of seventy-three Mergantile, well, actually, the site is seventy-three Mergantile Way. And issuing the special permit, it's under section one seventy-four twenty-five G six and one seventy-four twenty-five G nine. Zoning bylaws allow for construction of a fifteen-unit, nine thousand nine hundred thirty-nine square foot boat storage building, in an outside gravel surface boat storage area, and property located in I-1 zoning district, map eighty-eight parcel ninety-four, Mashpee, Mass. Owner of record, Susan Rogers. An issuing the, the special permit, the board has determined the applicant meets all the conditions of special permit under Mass General Law Forty-Eight, Section Nine. Like to make reference to a site plan, site plan titled, Existing Conditions, Plan, Permit Review Only Not For Construction, sheet number C-two dash zero, or dot zero, date May twelfth, two thousand seventeen, scale one inch equals thirty feet, project title Boat Storage Facility, seventy-three Mergantile Way, Mashpee, Mass. O-two-six-four-nine, prepared for Mr. Richard McCracken, three thirty-four, Catuitt Bay Drive, Catuitt, Mass. O-two-six-three-five, prepared by Baxter and I Engineering Surveying Registered Professional Engineers and Land Surveyors, seventy-eight North Street, Third Floor, Hyannis, Mass. O-two-six-zero-one, stamped by Matthew W. Eddy, number four-three-one-eight-three, Professional Engineer, and Shane M. Malone, number four-eight-six-eight-seven, Professional Land Surveyor, sheet number C-three dot one, Layout and Dimension Plan, sheet number C-four dash zero, or dot zero, Grading and Drainage Plan. Also make reference to a building plan prepared by Capewide Construction, Mashpee, Mass. Morton Buildings Inc., Morton, Morton, Illinois, six-one-five-five-zero-zero-three-nine-nine, Office Norton, Mass. Job number one-two-two-zero-six-nine-nine-two-zero, drawn by B.J. Dates five-fifteen, two thousand seventeen, not checked, scale is noted, sheet number S-three of S-eight. And I'd like to add the following condition, that all department comments are read into the record, that have been read into the record, or are part of the record, become part of the special permit. And the reason why I'm saying that is, I want the special permit specifically referenced in the condo documents, at the time of submittal for a building permit, the zoning enforcement officer will make sure that the condo documents make reference to it, and then, at the time of the receipt of the occupancy by the building inspector of this community, there is a recorded copy presented at that same time. Go ahead, Kevin.
Just for the record, there is a reference to the special permit in the condo documents.
Okay, that's good, because then as long as all the comments become part of the special permit, then whenever they have reference, so I just want to make sure all these comments are part of the special permit, decision, not just reference to, but they're part of. So those things we just, so...
The special permit decision will speak for itself. If they're part of the decision, they're part of the decision.
Right. So I think it's important, Mary Ann, when you, if I may, Mr. Chairman?
Please.
When you do this special permit, you probably have to have exhibits, and they all have to be party to it? Because...
Condo docs.
I understand where he's going with this, because it just, if it just says subject to a conservation whatever, or Board of Health whatever, I just want to be very clear that what goes to record includes exhibits of those things, such as when the Board of Health makes a decision and lists all those things that he just read, that it's part of the decision as an exhibit.
You will have to make it part of the decision. It's not, you know...
See what I'm saying? It's an exhibit there too. Because, and my last thing is, is that it is subject to Board of Health approval, and any comments there too, being also part of the special permit.
That's understood.
Yeah. So I just, I just want it simple, so that when somebody looks at their condo documents, of record also is the special permit, which will be, and in there's exhibit, so they can actually, I'm buying a boat shed, I want to look through it, and it's, oh, the Board of Health says I can't do that, oh, this is, and it's an exhibit, boom, 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 on record.
Some of what's in those comments, however, are not conditions, they're just comments that are made by the various boats.
Yeah, so who cares?
Which is, which is really distinct from a condition.
It's just a piece of paper.
Just a piece of, just a piece of paper, but you want to be sure that it's part of the decision, right?
I agree.
Some of it's comment, some of it isn't, isn't, so...
I'm just saying that it's, I agree. You know, it's going to refer like the plans, so you look at the plans, and on the plan that says that this drainage has to be cleaned every so often, and so when they do their condominium documents, whoever buys is going to say, hey, this is one of the things we're going to make sure that we do every year or two.
How many people do you know, and you've sold a lot of condominiums, read their condominium documents?
But you know what? It's not, we can lead a horse to water.
Mr. Chairman?
Can't make a drink.
Can we stick with the motion, please?
That'd be a great idea.
I've done everything I can to protect our people in the world.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
It'd be nice to see in the industrial part.
Yes, build, build as quick as you can build, we need the tax revenue. No, 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 I don't think it'll be a big deal. It does come back.
I'll need, one of these and one of the other.
We're not trying to be problematic.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Oh, my God.
We got a pile of stuff.
Not me.
Huh?
Oh, man.
So I have a question. Which one did?
I didn't check my box.
Oh, man. Man, I got more paper around here.
If I might say in that last one, Mary Ann, if you need any que, did you get my point?
I agree with you, Ron.
I just...
There's plenty of holes in the system.
I think we helped the applicant to go to the next stage, you got his approval, and so you just got to condition it.
One of you guys sign on this?
This is your junk pile?
Everybody's junk pile.
I'm going to add to everyone's junk. This is...
Is that it?
This is the, this is substantial, not a change.
So what the Board of Health had, I think, was because of the fact they went there, because, yeah, because Ronnie...
You know, from your job, you stole this from your job.
Okay, let's finish this up if we could. Jim, would you read the first other business?
Under other business, Sixth Cantalane, the board is to determine if the second floor addition has a substantial change and requires an application for a minor modification.
Hi, for the record, your name?
Board members, this is David Leventinen, Fifty Riverside Road, Mashpee.
Grab the microphone.
You got to get it close to you, it's not working well. Again, if you would.
I'm David Leventinen, Fifty Riverside Road, Mashpee, Mass. I'm also owner of Eagles Nest Builders, LLC, in town, and I am currently working for owner at Sixth Cantalane, doing some renovation work on their home. This really isn't worded correctly. What we're proposing to do is, is an existing second floor addition, it's already there, it's been there since nineteen ninety-five, is supported by three columns on sonotubes. And what they're proposing to do is, they would like to close in around the sonotubes to put in a conditioned space. Right now it's wide open underneath it. So basically, what we're doing is, we're not going to increase the footprint, we're not going to expand it, we're just going to close in underneath an existing approved second floor addition. So I guess the reason I'm here is, if you have any comments on that, because they had to come to the board, do this back in ninety-five. I spoke to Conservation yesterday, and he has no problems with closing it in, opposed to support it off the existing home foundation and the existing sonotubes. And it's going to end up being, a kitchen's getting moved in there. So we opens up the house on the first floor for a master bedroom.
All right, we've got some comments. Let me start by reading these in. Okay. Okay, this one is from Conservation, Drew McManus, and it stated Tuesday, July eleventh, I'm Mary Ann, this work would require the submission of a request for determination application to the Conservation Department. I do understand that proposed work is contained within the existing footprint of the home. However, it does involve excavation of ground within jurisdiction. And today... No, that's, wait a minute, yep. Yep, okay. In regards to Sixth Cantalane, I spoke with the contractor, and he provided details of the construction methodology. Upon this review, I've determined that this project will not require a permit from Conservation. So Conservation's happy. You're not going any closer to anywhere, you're just staying within the building that I saw. Yep.
So what's going under these, I'm trying to understand?
What we're going to do is, did, do they have a copy of the plan?
I, I have a picture or something that you must have sent to Mary Ann.
Yeah, I sent that.
No, no, no?
I got it. Let me see it. That's it.
Right, so what...
See this, see the columns?
Yeah.
They're going to enclose that and put a kitchen.
So what we're going to do...
The footprint's not changing.
No.
Correct. All we're going to do is enclose that.
Three walls, extend the floor out, and what we're going to do is, if you want, I can present this.
I know exactly what you're doing.
Okay.
So you're going to put a foundation then, instead of just footings, is it going to be a foundation around it?
It's not necessary, no. I wasn't going to excavate it out, because it has existing twelve-inch sonotubes. Structure's been there since nineteen ninety-five, and I could take it designing it right now. So all you need to do, I've been in the buildings for forty-four years, we need to support it off of existing home, with a ledger board, off the existing columns, and beam it across, structurally wise.
Even if he has to touch the ground, that's Conservation issue, that's...
Big dredger fell, right.
That's an issue for the building commissioner, but it's not a, as far as I'm concerned, it's not a zoning issue. He's not getting any bigger. That's already a structure, it's already part of zone block coverage, that structure above, because it's...
Agreed. The question is, is it a minor or major modification?
I think it's mine.
Do we know if there are any neighbors that were concerned at that point? Let me, let me tell you my concern. This is not an advertised proposal, right? So if we go back five years ago when he got the original variance, there were thirty people in the audience that were outspoken, and now this change is happening without their knowledge, we could have a problem. So were there, to the best of your knowledge, anyone when he got the original variance that had a problem with it?
We have no way of knowing, would we?
Boy, see, that's the only concern is me, is right, you know, I never knew this, and yet I was the first, you know...
Might say something, three of the neighbors are the, are all family. It's all the Cantas.
I know the area, it's...
Is this Neil Cantor's place?
What's that?
Is this Neil Cantor's place?
This used to be Jim's, his sister just purchased it about two months ago.
Is there, I think there's four houses on this one lot.
Neil's right across. Laura's over here, and their mom over here. Right, it's their own little compound.
It's on Wisconsin Island.
It's a little compound, the Cantor compound.
Probably not that issue then that exists.
You got anything?
If you go beyond that footprint, I'd have an issue, it's not going beyond the footprint.
They just ask you to come, make sure you...
That's not, that's not a zoning issue.
He's removing a deck, a deck to be removed, I want to know more information about that.
Okay, I want to...
Yes.
Okay, Mike has a question.
From the best, I was able to come out with this, the diagram you submitted to Mary Ann. It appears to be a, there's a deck that's on there that you're going to be removing?
Right, does a, an existing eight by ten steps on.
It's almost a, it's a deck to go into the door.
It's a, it's a step, oversized step.
All right. So I thought it's not a real deck, deck?
No, it's just sitting on the ground.
Well, I'm just curious, why would that be an issue for a was a deck, and still under that space, I'm just curious, where you going with it?
No, I was going to understand the parameters here, because the question's being, is it a major or minor? So if it was a full deck, I mean, a real deck with sonotubes and all that, then I'm considering that a major undertaking, yeah?
Well, I think it's a major project, I don't know if it's a major, as far as I'm concerned.
Zoning issue.
A zoning issue. I think it's a major project for the building department, that needs a permit, and all what you need, but I don't think it's a zoning issue, because he's not getting any closer to the...
If I may comment?
Working within the same parameters, is all popping out.
No, that's, I, I don't think it's a big issue for us.
And there probably wouldn't be a view issue because of the area that it's in, right? So it's not like somebody's going to complain, say, presumably...
When it's all done and said, they won't even know what's ever done, right? That, that, I think what you're looking at was the original deck on the original site plan back in ninety-five they had to remove. I think that's what that means.
Well, I think it shows on the picture.
Well, I, it's a little stupid there now, but...
Yeah, I was out there, two days ago, I saw that.
Just know by what's being presented, and if it's been removed, then this shouldn't have been even here, because when a site plan is submitted, it's supposed to be giving me the information, what is there now? So right now it says, existing deck to be removed, and I've got proposed additions, so I'm going, all right, what are we doing here? Because I wasn't really quite certain, based on the information I had, whether or not the original size was the deck, but not this proposed addition, you follow what I'm saying?
I agree. And you know what, when he sent the picture, that made it all very clear.
It's a little stupid thing there.
Do you want to see it?
No, I'm getting it now, but I'm just saying, based on the drawing that's submitted...
Very easy when you go out there and look at it, too.
Yeah.
Yeah, all right.
So, yeah, I, I think it's a minor modification.
I agree.
I agree.
I agree.
Okay. So, um, do we have a...
I would like to make a motion, first of all, I think there's an error, board to determine if second floor addition is substantial change, wasn't it a first floor addition?
Correct.
All right. I'd like to make a motion that the board determines that the first floor addition is an, is not a subs, do you want to go negative or positive on this?
Let's go positive.
Okay, all right.
It's a minor modification.
All right, let's do it that way. I'd like to make a motion that the, that the board determines that the first floor addition is a minor modification to the application for a variance that was issued some...
Ninety-five.
Ninety-five.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
All right.
Enjoy the day. Let's go to bed, guys. No, we got to wave. We got to wave.
Thank you.
Thank you, good luck.
Yeah, sometimes I'm going negative on that. Yeah, no, I agree with you.
You going negative? All right. Thank you.
It's your garbage.
I am, I have got...
Are you the garbage collector?
I'm the guy, yes.
I've got so much paper here.
I'm down to nothing.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question real quick, don't want to get into a long dissertation. So the, the design review board, or whatever this board, that Charlie Riley, someone who looked at this at, can we have two members on that board? And I'll tell you why. I wouldn't mind being on that board, I'm more than happy to push the button and make a requirement that these people, so I can report back to this board saying, and it might help if, because if you're not available, I'm not available, one of us would be available, presumably.
We already gone through those lists.
Yeah. We are met yesterday, and there are two applications, only four people are allowed on this board. We have two, and two came in. One of the two has to be, according to the bylaw, a... Or...
Or land, I mean, a landscape...
Civil engineer or something like that.
And how many people on the board, four?
Four.
So two of them have to...
It's actually not a board, it's a committee.
Well, then, then maybe...
Representative from the ZVA, and a representative...
So if I'm not around, normally it's Bill that jumps in.
All right, so maybe we can sit down with Rodney and request that anytime something that requires any type of drainage or whatever goes to a Charlie Riley or something? Where do we go with this?
Well, you're, for starters, you're talking about the wrong board.
Okay.
You're talking design. Design, all they look at is the architectural features, landscape, that sort of...
So what would be the right board?
It'd be under...
Plan review.
So who's on that board?
All the department heads. Hence why I was saying, you had the DPW, you had the town plan, you had all them.
You're on it.
Yes.
You could.
Right, well, this is why I was making the suggestion, is, is in the form, in the application saying what you need to do, we can put language in there that drainage, couts, and all that have to be approved by somebody, by the town engineer or by whatever. You have to put the mechanism in there, you have to give them well notice. So then the question comes back to, is, okay, so whether it's the town engineer, or whatever third party, who's paying for it?
Advocate.
That's your take on it.
Well, listen, it happens to me all over the place.
I understand it, but I've got to, we can't just say you're paying for it, it may have to that stage, go to the town manager, or, and or the board of selectmen to say they're authorizing that, because we're basically telling somebody to pay for something.
I think we've got a huge hole that's going to bite us.
I'm not disagreeing, you're asking me the process.
Yeah, no, I got you.
I'm telling you, that's the process, you just can't say, hey, look, you're going to do this, because right now, my understanding is, is if the building was at one hundred square feet more, it would have been a planning board, and planning board automatically sends everything...
Then I would like to make the following statement to this board, then, if I may. If, in fact, you can pursue that, and if you believe, or if someone believes above you pay, or you believe that we need to have someone's approval, i.e. Rodney's, to say, yes, you know, you can, an engineer can do it, or we have the right to require an engineer to do it, and the applicant pay for it, I'll pursue that if it needs to be to sit down with Rodney, because I believe it's, it's a huge thing for this, for this board. I think we're proving things.
I'm not disagreeing, I'm just telling you what the procedure is.
For the town, really.
Right, so I guess what I'm saying is, if you get some type of stop somewhere down the road to accomplish this task, I have no problem if you let me know, and I will pursue the end of that, to get to where we want to get to. Okay? Am I okay to say that, Mr. Chairman?
It's fine.
I don't want to overstep bounds, it's just I think we need this. It's crazy, we're.
Okay, now for the fun time.
All right. Glenn? There you go.
All right.
All right, Jim, would you read the next other business?
Under other business, a vote to reorganize board member appointments.
All right, we need to reorganize the board by electing a new chairman, vice chairman, and clerk. So I'd like to accept nominations before we vote on the next chairman.
I'd like to make, go ahead.
No, you go ahead.
I'd like to nominate Jonathan Furbush for our next chairman.
Do we have, do we have any other nominations?
I move the nominations to be closed.
Ooh.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Obstained, me. Okay, let's move on to the next one. We are, like to, how about a vice chairman? Do we have a nomination?
I'd like to nominate Bill Blaisdell as the next vice chairman.
I'll second that.
Wait a minute, do we have another nomination? Any other nominations? Hearing none? Hey, do we have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Obstained.
All right, and we need to nominate a clerk. Do we have a nomination for a clerk?
Ron Bondvi for clerk.
Do we have any other nominations, Dom?
None.
Anybody? Do we have a second?